Councilor Payne. Councilor Crowe.
President.
Councilor Vaughn.
President.
Councilor Finn.
President.
Councilor Harris.
President.
Councilor LaFors.
Present.
Councilor Liang.
Present.
Councilor Powell Chief. President please.
President.
Do you all stand and join me? In a moment of silence, for our men and women serving here in abroad, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now if I can fill with the open meeting law.
Yes, this is the national law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-eight. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting while we transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and deemed ignolent and permissible.
Thank you, Madam President. If you will, Madam President, please read the seating segregation.
It's clear on May fourteenth, juvenile diabetes day. The annual juvenile diabetes research foundation kids walk. Madam President.
Thank you. It's an honor again this year to be here to welcome the children and families of the JDRF initiative here in Quincy. As many of you know, the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation is an organization dedicated to accelerating life-changing breakthroughs to cure, prevent, and treat type-one diabetes. For the past several years, we've had a walk here in Quincy, starting off at Beechwood Knoll. I know the kids and the parents have been here in the past to recognize juvenile diabetes day here in the city of Quincy. And it's a pleasure welcoming them back here this evening. We have Joe, Alyssa, and Catherine. Usually their parents talk, but they're letting their children talk this evening. So guys, come on up.
Hello. I'd like to start off by thanking Quincy City Council for having us here today. And I'm here to tell you about our Kids' Walk to Cure Type-One Diabetes. This is the sixth one. Local Quincy said, "Local Quincy families that are impacted by type-one diabetes and partnered with Quincy Public Schools to hold this walk." In the past five years, we've raised over $180,000, benefiting JDRF, with ten percent of that going back to Quincy Public Schools. My name is Joseph Menelari. I'm fifteen years old. I'm in the ninth grade at Quincy High School. Over five years ago, I was diagnosed with a disease called type-one diabetes. Type-one diabetes is an autoimmune disease in which a person's pancreas stops producing insulin, which is a hormone you need to get energy from food. Type-one diabetes affects both children and adults, and its onset has nothing to do with diet or lifestyle. There's currently nothing you can do to prevent it, and there's no cure. 1.25 million Americans have type-one diabetes, and there's an increase in diagnoses of this disease. It's predicted by the year 2050 that five million people will have type-one diabetes. Living with type-one diabetes is a constant struggle. You need to check your blood sugar by breaking your finger eight to ten times every day. I use an insulin pump to pump insulin into my body before I eat and keep my blood sugar at a healthy level. I need to carefully regulate this insulin dose with eating activities. It's a constant struggle, and I constantly have to be paying attention to how I feel, what I eat, and just my blood sugar. Someone else like to go?
Hello. My name is Alyssa Gonzalez, and I'm a eighth-year at Central Middle School. I've had type-one diabetes since first grade. Diabetes affects my every weight and every sleep level. Any other kid without diabetes can grab a snack and eat it without having to worry. A diabetic has to stop whatever they do when they're hungry, check their blood sugar, calculate the amount of carbs in their food that they're about to eat, and calculate their insulin dose. This is for any morsel of food that I am going to put into my mouth. I may look like a regular if you don't have that said, but unlike any other student without diabetes, I can space and track and can walk through fields with my friends without worry. I have to start checking my blood sugar and having snacks at two o'clock, even though track starts at three fifteen. Diabetes affects approximately 1.25 million Americans. However, thanks to the JDRF, scientists and doctors have made great strides in technology, and now I can wear this little book that I continuously monitor. Now I have better control over my blood sugar. However, it's still a daily struggle to live with diabetes. We need your help to raise awareness and funds for diabetes. Every single day, I am reminded by my diabetes that I'm not like everyone else. However, diabetes does not provide me with diabetes.
Hi. My name is Catherine Hall, and I've had type-one for five years. The JDRF walked in Quincy and go along for about five years as well. I have been very lucky to attend each year and meet new diabetics and all the people who show a willingness to support people like me. Alyssa Gonzalez, Joe Menelari, Kate Demoplis, and Amy Gold, and other diabetics in Quincy. The JDRF walk is a great opportunity for community service for anyone willing to help out. It will be a fun time for anyone who decides to come. It will be held between North Elementary School on Federal Street on May fourteenth, where people will arrive for nine-thirty and walk in the end of tech. We are happy to say fourteen schools will be participating, including many elementary schools, all male schools, and both high schools. The JDRF, or Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, works to help fight the lives of type-one diabetes that we're working on here. I am donating to researchers wanting to improve quality of diabetes. I experience this every day when I use my desk phone, a continuous control system that helps me keep my sugar from dropping. I also use an insulin pump. The machine makes me so easy that I don't have to take multiple injections every day. Diabetes is something that affects me every day. I never sleep until I taste the pain. However, with the help of the JDRF, we can hope for a cure. Thank you for listening. We hope to see you at the walk.
All right, very nice guys. Thank you. I looked at your parents. They were beaming. You made them very proud. We just want to thank you all for coming up and again reminding us of the seriousness and the issues facing folks with type-one diabetes. I know I would be there again just to repeat it, taking on Saturday, May fourteenth, at Beechwood Knoll. I know the walk starts at 10:00 a.m. If you get there early, bring your checks. And I do see my walking buddy in the audience with the name of school committee member Barbara Isola always walks with the kids, but I can't push them anymore. I should push them up. So I know folks in the city are very supportive of this effort. So we will see you all on Saturday, May fourteenth. And we'll just take a brief one-minute recess for two seconds. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Thank you. But yeah. Councilors, we do want a picture. Margaret. Margaret. Just do a picture with the kids. Great job. Oh, everybody. Oh, no. Good job, everybody. Good job. It does. All right, let's all squeeze in, Eric. Everybody say money.
Money. Patrick, credit.
All right, good job, guys. Thank you for coming. All right, so we will call this meeting back to order. Before we get to the next item, I do want to recognize former Mayor Jim Sheed here this evening with his government class at Quincy College. So welcome, Mayor Sheed. Very well, Madam President. Next item, Madam President.
Thank you. Number one, the 2016 1-19 presentation from John the Mayor of the fiscal 2017 general budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Madam President. Members of City Council, I'm glad to be here tonight making our annual visit to go over the annual budget. And I want to express my gratitude to each of you for your service to the city and our future deliberations over the next several weeks. Look forward to how the department heads, my administration work diligently with you, providing any and all information you may need to make those decisions. I believe that this budget reflects the values of our city. We continue to make investments in education, public safety, parks, libraries. I think that this city provides services that are second to none, and this budget reflects that expectation from our residents. You should have with you tonight this document, which is the official document, also the water and sewer document, and we'll get to the five-year plan subsequent. If we can go through the slides, if you will, on the presentation code, the fiscal seventeen budget. It is a total amount. It's under four percent increase over the previous year. We believe it's a stable budget, growing stronger. As you know, some of you were on this body when we went through some very difficult years back in fiscal eight, nine, and ten, dealing with a very difficult economy. And I believe we rebounded pretty well with the services in various areas of government. So there's a total number, $287,963,234. This is a breakout of where those numbers go by category. Employee benefits, administration finance, public safety, debt service, culture recreation, human services, and infrastructure management. Infrastructure management includes, for example, parks, EDW, water and sewer, where public safety is not only police and fire, but also the inspection services. Administration finance of those offices mainly be put in City Hall, municipal finance office, assessors, purchasing, and treasurer collector. You can see the education spending is up significantly over just a few years ago. And I would add that in this number, when we look at the total expenditures for our school system, if I exceed the $98 million dollar number. As many of you know, for example, I cross the guys across the school kids every day. The school are in the police budget. The private department maintains the grounds for the schools. The debt service number that's in the budget reflects debt incurred for school improvements and school projects and new schools. So that number is far greater than the $98 million. In addition, there's probably about $3.5 million in federal and state grants that come in on top of this number as well, including Title I. So as you can see, this is a limited growth budget. We have some new positions and some expanded programs in it, which is about less than one percent of the total. Most of the increases are reflected in the salary increases as well as health and retirement. What we have done is we put the increase in the salaries in the budget in anticipation of what you need settled for the fiscal year completes. Should that not occur, we'd be back to you for clarification to take those numbers out, and we'll create a reserve appropriation for that for the negotiation purposes in the coming year. For the record, the teachers have settled, as a number of school unions have settled, and a number of city side unions have settled, but not all have. In those first settlements, those contracts call for one percent increase this year at the current rate. Contracts expire June thirtieth in the teacher's case back in August. So that takes here this year. And it calls for two percent increase in fiscal seventeen. So we're carrying the one percent plus the two percent in the new budget that we reflect in every line. Again, if we don't have all those issues resolved, we'll come back, work with your financial share in order, and make those adjustments going forward. Couple of items that I know that we've been working hard on as we discussed with our financial advisors and our bond advisors and bond council, the need to continue to build our stabilization. As you know, we have a pretty significant bond rating, and one of the weaknesses that have been pointed out to us is we need to increase our stabilization number. So this is the first time, certainly this administration, and I can't recall in recent memory a line item in the budget that will go directly to stabilization. In addition, we all know about those other post-employee benefits called OPEP, which has become an issue in the finance world of cities and towns and government all over. And we are putting another into that account. That trust will be at 1.3 million, the OPEP account. Stabilization, we've now exceeded more than $10 million, but we have a waste of dough. This budget is conservative, and if you look at the last several years, we have surpassed our estimates on revenue, which obviously leads into a healthy year finish and hopefully just some free cash on the surplus. I mentioned stabilization. That just shows you the comparison between fiscal 2012, where we were, and where we are today. In addition to what I mentioned about the regular budget, we also continue with our policy of when the free cash is certified, that a percentage of that free cash is then brought back into the council and appropriated into the stabilization fund. Something we've done in the past, and we'll continue to do that. And I would expect that in the coming weeks, we're going to further present some additional financial proceeds and policies, which I would like to see this body endorse, keep our conservative approach going and serve as a message to our bond advisors and bond council. Some of the new items in this year's budget, you can see here, the conservation growth, adding four firefighters in addition to the fire department budget as a financial manager. You may know that the police department has a significant number of civilians. The fire department has one secretary to the chief. And we believe the financial position is warranted in the very largest department by that we've married that from a financial manager at the police station to assistant chief to administrate the daily finances. The $300,000 added in overtime more reflects closely what they've spent, haven't spent this year. And that's been mainly to keep all pieces in service, including as often as we can Rescue One. It's our hope that as we build some more firefighters into this budget going forward, that we can fully fund Rescue One twenty-four seven on a regular basis. The assessors office, I'll remind you, where the assessors office is one of the most important financial offices, and that that's the department that generates the values, that generates the revenue that comes back into the city to fund the budget. And as you may recall, back in the budget cuts, we cut the assessors office to full-time assessors. There were three full-time assessors. We cut that back to one. We added one last year. We added a third one to bring the full complement of the board full-time. In addition, we are adding an appraiser, methodologist, what's the term? Methodologist slash analyst, which will assist the assessors in putting data together, data entry, tracking values, making sure that, particularly in commercial areas, that we're getting every dollar that we expect. Public buildings. We've done a little bit of shifting, additional position. Public buildings, as you may recall, is a fairly even budget as far as the city's history goes. I view it as important as the Department of Public Works budget. And we have been building that budget over recent years. As you all know, we have fifty-three municipal buildings that we maintain. And for many, many years, we did not maintain them well. And we have to continue to invest in those capital assets that we are charged to maintain. So this budget more reflects where I think we're settling in on as far as numbers. We are creating a direct of engineering position. There's a lot of engineering issues. And upgrading the director of the department, equivalent to the public works commissioner. I basically put in public works as horizontal construction, where the public buildings is the vertical construction. And as you know, we've got a lot of projects going on in the city, and we're not letting up on the pedal at all. We've got no significant number of projects that are in the pipeline. A new item in the budget is private department for tree planting, $100,000. We're adding a director of public health nurses for nurses at the health department, additional money for pest control. I'll leave it at that. In special services, we're adding an additional building inspector. We did produce one there a few years back when the budget crunch. And we're seeing a lot of construction around the city, and this certainly is warranted. And as you may know, the building department brings a lot of revenue in through permit fees. The big change in this year's budget really is the creation of a new department. Essentially, we're taking traffic and parking out of the public works budget and putting the department on its own. In addition, we've taken the fire line division out of the fire department and combining those functions into a new department. We haven't come up with a quick, simple, easy name. So right now it's traffic, parking, alarm, lighting. So it includes all the traffic signals, all the markings of all roads, brush walks, lane lines, parking stalls. Alarms would be all of those fire alarms that they maintain today. And the lighting, as you know, we purchased a street lighting system. And as part of our capital improvement program, we anticipate conversion to an LED system. So we have a number of certainly well-qualified electricians that we feel combine will be able to maintain the signals, maintain the lights, and do all of those items necessary for this department. So funding was taken out of public works, out of the fire department, and some added to create this new department. This will allow a new director, which will handle the administrative functions, making sure things are getting done. It will free up a little bit, far more the traffic engineer to allow her to do her job, really just engineering from the traffic side and less part of some of the paperwork. So I think it makes a lot of sense for our tax payers. Here's the slide that talks a little bit about revenue. For those folks that may be watching at home, we derive our revenue from three major sources. Property tax is the most significant one. As you know, this past year, the levy was about eighty percent residential, remained commercial. And that's the biggest piece. Every city town depends on property tax to fund the budget. In addition, we receive state aid, which includes chapter seventy education funding, unrestricted local aid, and of course, on the roadside, chapter ninety. And then the local receipt side, the third piece. And then there's any money for motor vehicle excise, building permit fees, birth certificates, et cetera, following to that line. So the property tax is the largest source. And as you know, the delegation has worked very hard, our state delegation, to fight for more locally and funding for chapter seventy. We appreciate their efforts. Our next slide is really talking about our debt. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, we had our rate increase to double A-plus. We have been very fortunate to take full advantage of the excellent borrowing rates that are in the market today. Debt, I mentioned earlier to the finance committee. When I was questioning our debt ratio to budgets, five point three percent. And that is follow over than the average for most cities is about eight percent. So when you look at some of the things we're doing, our debt is offset in some ways by community preservation, in some ways by store rehab fund, in some ways by the hotel motel tax. It's not purely on the general revenue side. The next slide speaks a little bit about the levy capacity. As we all know, Proposition two and a half was passed back in 1980, I believe it was, which put a limit on how cities and towns could raise property taxes each year by what amount. And that two and a half percent, although some people think it may be their bill, it's two and a half percent of the total levy, the total amount of money that we collect from property tax, both residential and commercial. What this slide shows is, and this is the current, not the proposed fiscal seventeen budget, because all those numbers are not quite available. But the blue is the excess capacity on that levy and compares this with the number of cities and towns around us and some cities outside. That means that we could be taxing a lot more in the property tax side. I know that a public doesn't like to hear that and I don't like to say that. The reality is we have significant excess levy capacity because we have not been taxing at the max. We're trying to strike that balance with people. And then, of course, the red column is the long-term debt. And again, it shows us we're the highest in this column in excess levy capacity and then one of the lowest on the debt percentage. So that's a summary of what's going to be before you or what is before you as of tonight in the fiscal two seventeen budget. I do want to take an opportunity to express my gratitude to a number of folks. I know there's a number of school committee members here. My back is two of them, so I apologize. I don't know which ones are. But obviously, the school committee works very hard on the school budget, providing the best in programming to our kids of our city. In addition, there's a number of department heads here. Department heads and managers work extremely hard each and every day. I know a number of you interact with them on a regular basis. I'm grateful for their efforts. Staff members who work out of this budget, municipal finance office, Mark Gallinari, Eric, and Masha, certainly my office, particularly Chris Walker. I want to thank them for all their efforts. And those two, we tap from time to time. She's always generous with her time in assisting us with a number of those matters. In addition, I want to express my gratitude to those that put on the line every day for the city. Whether it's teachers, or firemen, police officers, laborers, blurts, librarians, whatever the case may be, each and every day, they work extremely hard and deliver good services to the residents of our city. With that, that is the summation of our fiscal seventeen budget. I'd be happy to entertain any questions at this time.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to take a motion to refer to 2017 budget to finance.
Motion to refer to finance. All this is paid.
I don't have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have much to say on the water and sewer, but it's before you. So I'd ask that respectfully move that into committee.
Yes.
And if we're ready, we'll go to the next item.
We are ready, Mr. Mayor.
This one may take a little longer, so I hope you can all stay awake. As you know, back in 2011, I know some folks were here. This body voted on a $25 million capital improvement plan, a five-year plan. on a twenty-five million dollar capital improvement plan, a five-year plan. It has been five years. A number of projects have been completed, a lot of improvements have been made. And some of you may recall the floods of two thousand and ten, and we directed a number of dollars toward flood control projects, seawell projects, as well as building projects, our schools, and windows, and roofs, et cetera. So much has been done, and there's a little money left in that account, it's encumbered. And that's because we have permitting issues going on with the EPA, the guy, the Greenberg Bridge tiegates. As you know, we have about forty-three tiegates around the city, the most significant ones being the Greenberg Bridge, and those are still under permitting. So we still have some more to do on that. I know this body has been anxious, and we've been talking a little bit about coming back to update the five-year plan. I would suggest that this is a living, breathing document that changes day to day as the priorities change. And we've done a lot of work with other department heads on putting together the needs going forward. What we're doing tonight is I'm giving you an executive summary of the due diligence of what the priorities are. And in a subsequent meeting after tonight, we'll be back to you with that first piece, if you will, request for probably bond authorization to deal with a number of issues. And I'd like to address one thing right up front, and that is, I know we've had some discussions about some of the issues of that first five-year plan of this administration as far as moving forward. And we've learned a lot, I think this body learned, my administration certainly learned from that effort. And I think what you'll see is a more careful, detailed approach to you. And what I mean by that is, you know, when we go forward with the plan, ask for appropriation, for example, there'll be a number in there for roads. That's pretty clear what that is. It goes up to bid, and whatever the dollar markets, what we spend on roads. But there'll be other projects in here that will require a lot of design, engineering, and bidding. And I think it makes sense that we take some of those projects and take them a piece at a time. That we move forward with design, we move forward with engineering, engage the body once again, update the body, and then perhaps, if the body is willing, move forward with that next phase, which would then, obviously, cases. So I think that change will probably help open and keep the lines of communication open, I should say, for that. So we can get started on this project. This body's already taken a vote on Sterling Middle School. You've appropriated about six hundred thousand to date, and committed, as you know, to the paperwork with MSBA. Sterling Middle School has been long talked about, and we now have the architect in full design, the contract manager, as well as the contractor, who is constructing the building on the job, and we expect it to be in the ground sometime next year. But we'll be back to you with that final number appropriation. And as you know, this is a mass school building authority project. Therefore, we anticipate about seventy percent reimbursement on the program. What's a little different than this one in Central is there's no land acquisition for this one. Central, we had to acquire a number of posses of land, we don't have for this one. The next one that we've identified, both the school committee and the council have voted for the statement of interest. I think all would agree, the next difficult building plant is the Squonam School. The original section's pretty old, and the issues that were done over the years, I would boldly say they were not quality. And this one is in the pipeline now with the SBA to look at replacement. The next one, this will be in two sections. It's going to be a section, we're going to be talking about land acquisition, property acquisition. I am proposing, or will be proposing, that we purchase St. Mary's School and record property over on Crescent Street for the future building of a new elementary school. And I think it's very important that we take advantage of the opportunities when we can. To build a new school in a built-out city to find a location to do that can be very expensive if this land is not available. The H. Diocese of Austin is opening up St. Mary's property for lease and open for purchase, so we are in discussions with them at this time to see what the appetite would be. We'll get into this in the acquisition session, the acquisition piece of this for the funding portion, but the idea would be to take the property now, go through the SBA process, and perhaps build a new elementary school for West Quincy. Clifford Marshall Construction, a number of years ago, helped somewhat out of your right or wrong when Quincy Point lost an elementary school. Kids at West Quincy that live on the other side of Expressway go to Moncler School, in some cases, Wellsley School. So I believe this will strengthen our system because the burden on those schools, they're really bulging at the seams with numbers in those buildings. So this would be a return to a neighborhood school for that part of our city and assist those other buildings within some of that pressure. Obviously, we'll be back with you with a lot more information. Schools across the board, technology upgrades, microboards, technology labs, computers, equipment, as you know, these things get updated quickly. We have a large school system that does a great job of anticipating during the significant upgrade on the technology side. Specific schools, we're going to be back to you, North Quincy High School. The gymnasium bleachers are in disrepair, and do not meet ADA safety requirements. We'll be looking at that, as well as a number of other items. You'll see in this packet, there are a number of items within each of these properties that are identified. That doesn't mean it's everything. It means these are some of the items that were prioritized, a lot of work done with public buildings department, as well as the folks from the various schools. Next slide, the Lincoln Hancock School, for example. The pool is coming up underneath, there's some very serious improvements, upgrades to maintain that pool there. Beachwood No, we have a sanitary line issue. As you know, this year, we're doing, maybe postponed to next season, but we do want a roof and window, and window wall replacement at Beachwood No School. Park of Schools, just add the windows, front steps need work, our meadows for heating system, needs to be engineered, and this is another example. We commit some money for engineering, design work, and come back to the body on what we think the estimates would be. Number of items in various schools, Moncler, as you know, has the windows, Wallace and the windows, but there's some other issues in some of these schools that has identified on the slide. Clifford Marshall, HVAC issues, Bellicia, water heating devices, water heating systems, dents in the windows. These are typical building issues that in the private sector and corporate world, these cities have done on a regular, regular basis. Government's always a little behind in infrastructure, I would suggest, at every level. We're doing our best to bring things up to standard. Number of schools need a number of, we didn't list them all here, but every school needs something, and we're talking about buildings. In addition, the school lot paving across the city, we'll be looking at a line for that. As you know, it's not just about cars parking on the school, but the kids actually love to play in the playgrounds. We have these lots that are painted with various recreational uses, so it's an important piece of the school program. Public safety, I mentioned this some time ago, but we're going to be formalizing now with this new program, and that is the possibility of a new public safety headquarters for our city. The police station, as you know, goes back to the twenties, and the issue was done in the eighties. It's a terrible building, quite frankly, and it's needed an awful lot of work. And I believe that, you know, enough on wasting on that existing structure, it's time to replace that building. At the same time, we're looking at a number of firehouses that need work, and Central Firehouse is one that needs some major infrastructure work as well. So what we'd like to do is to look at a study, design, and engineering work done, that we would go to Broad Street, we would purchase, on the acquisition side, the former Brian Post, we take the land from C Street over to Broad Street, from the police station back into the public works yard, and come up with a plan for a new public safety headquarters. If it's viable, police chief will be involved, the fire chief will be involved, there'll be a committee involved. In fact, if the city council president wants to designate a council to serve on that committee, we'd be happy to have somebody to serve on that committee as well. In addition to dealing with those issues, and I think in the end, we will then provide one, E nine-one-one center. We can also address some of the other offices around the city. For example, if you've been to Jay Dupa's office, inspection service, they're literally top of each other. The senior center is outgrown in space, so with all due respect to the health department, it'd be time to find them a new location so that the seniors can use the entire space. We have a bungalow in High School Lab, I don't know if anyone's ever seen it, that's where the vetting service operates out of. It's not the best of conditions for that, so we believe a new public safety headquarters could include some other municipal space to serve the residents of the city. So we have a long way to go, but this is the first major step. Again, we're coming back to do a subsequent meeting in the specifics on finance. While we're looking at that, we're going to have the engineers look at C Street. And you know, there's a section here about traffic, but if we can perhaps at the same time wind down C Street to provide more queuing space for that three-day traffic every morning and every evening, it may help the residents, particularly the one-one, given out of C Street. In addition, I mentioned the firehouses. Each city firehouse needs some attention. We continue to work, we've had a committee with the fleet, the fire chief, and some of the union members along with that this administration, Chippewa, and number of items. Of course, we had the donation from the Austin family in memory of the firefighter John Austen, some major improvements have gone on in the West Quincy Station. We're truly grateful to them. In addition, outside, a number of the lots and apron areas need work, the fire stations will be addressing those. Onto the next side with the libraries. The Thomas Crane Library, which we're all very, very proud of, Richardson Building, magnificent building, but that old structure needs some work, we want to maintain that beautiful building. In addition, the inside of the new addition, believe it or not, it's getting up near age, and the carpet needs to be replaced. That's a good sign, that means a lot of people using that library, taking out books and other writers. South Quincy Library, there's some issues down there as well, and we'll be dealing with those. And of course, the other branches, Wallace and Ed and Shaw, there's some items in both of those locations that are to deal with. It's funny, when I talk to Begin about library services, even the day and age when, you know, you would think less people are using books, they continue to take out more and more books each year, so I know they provide a lot more than just that, but that's an interesting statistic. Next item, the animal shelter. This also involves the public safety headquarters in that the current shelter is inadequate, not in great shape, and if your dog or pet lover, it's an embarrassment. So we're looking for multiple new locations, we've had some discussions with some folks, some folks at this table, as well as some other individuals, and we've had some CPA ministry events, a little bit of a study to take this to the next level, and we'll be back, we'll talk a little bit about that. But think about that, the PPW trucks are turning around in the shelter today, and walking the dogs and animals out in the salt and sand on the street, it's not very good, so it's time we updated that, and we'd like to build it with a park, first-time dog park in the city. The next item, public facilities, Maritime Center, Council of Forests, it was called that grin, or face it. We've done some work down at the Maritime Center, as you know, a number of years ago, the NBC purchased the land, and the city's had a lease management arrangement with the now GCR. And as you also may know, you voted on CPA number for this project, it was recommended by the CPA, about a hundred and sixty thousand, I believe the number was, to help us with the new ramp. Prior to that, we had a vote with the Economic Seaport Council, which the governor's appointment on for this area, we got a grant of six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, got a hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant. That is to advance the ramp, boat ramp, which doesn't mean standards of today. We also own the public land, and we have the old building there that needs to be replaced. I will be suggesting to this body, and asking this body, under the acquisition side of the appropriation that we committed, and there's four properties there, three houses that really are in the parking lot area of that facility. In order to really have a true voting facility, you need the room for trailers and vehicles, as well as the posses on C Street, which we add for additional parking, across from Louis', which we submitted last year and done before the session ended. Public facilities, as far as the Kennedy Center. I know that Kennedy Center has more than four thousand members, it's been well received. We have a reyard there that someday, we call this a milestone school, used to be a softball field and other amenities in the school. That land is since gone to Frank Mike, and we are going through a process now to take that land as additional parking, but really add to some great outdoor amenities for our seniors. Watching courts, and hushing courts, and outdoor cooking area, and a peace deck. If you're looking to advance that, probably with the money from the sales of the Dawes estate, which we've done assigned the Dawes name on part of this facility. Again, public facilities, the Ford River Clubhouse, there's a lot of history in Quincy Point, formerly owned by the Shipyard, is a social club, the Shipyard way back when, it's under the jurisdiction of the Park and Recreation Board, needs work. We've touched with the board council here about advancing the use of that building, perhaps for some scene use, as well as the current communities that gets now. PPW Garage, both PPW and Park Semataries, those garages are always needed. Pierce. On the parks, this is where I get a little feedbacking council. We started a master plan in Merrimoun Park a number of years ago, and this is to really take it to the next level. Merrimoun Park was really unparalleled, and when we think about what Charles Francis Adams did for the city in eighteen eighty-five, renting that land from Hancock Street, up from down into the marshes, into the Black's Creek, we look to take full advantage of that entire property, connected with the CEO of Roseman Park on Fetter Street, behind the Beachwood No School, that extends out to the Quincy Shore Reservation, and then connected to the Quincy Shore Reservation. Imagine it's a foot bridges, walkways, and bikeways, it is a magnificent location at any time of the day. And of course, with the group increase and upgrades, some of the recreational opportunities as well. The same night in eighteen eighty-five, the Faxon family donated the Faxon Park in South Quincy, and since that time, land has been added to that facility, and we're looking to continue that master plan, and that has great, great utility to the city, both for active as well as passive recreation. Ford River Field, it's actually in construction right now, it's a great project, some of that money's in the reservation, some of that money was secured by the state representative Ron Mariano. If that project continues to move forward, and it will be in combination with the next slide, the Mon Street Beach area, they have connected. The Mon Street Beach area is a little lower, but we worked with the council on that, Park and Recreation Board, a lot of master plan down there. And we are obviously in the construction. The Ford River side also numbers the Ray Diamond Field, the diamond, a great guy who served the youth in Quincy Point for many, many years. The Mon Street Beach area, I actually had a boathouse many, many years ago, I don't remember, but Perry Wells probably does, it's been around forever. And this is where Jaden Hatch, who we talked about, he is going to be donating the voting facility to be used for rowing, for high school rowing program, and also for canoeing and other potential boat uses. That is in the process of environmental issues, if you will. That is Quincy Point area, so we'll work with the post zone management, get some relief from that. It's always been a recreational use, it's never been used commercially, so we believe we'll be successful there and more than coming. And then, of course, Citywide, the parks, we have parks all across the city, some major ones, the minor ones, the park parks, and they'll be looked at for upgrades in all areas. We did a major park improvement along a number of years ago, maybe fifteen now, we've done a lot of improvements, and it's time we revisit those Citywide. We talked a little bit about this project tonight in finance, those who will be here. We have, obviously, I am in the finance committee to get this project completed. This is a program that is a flood controller project. It's a program that adds to our athletic facilities for the entire city, helps North Quincy High, which relieves the stadium to Quincy High, certainly the new organization. It also adds about a hundred and thirty cars parking lot, which can only serve the facility there as far as the field goes, but as you know, North Quincy High is, there's an awful lot of other programs, I mean, gymnasium at night, and voting, and all kinds of other programs. This will help provide the needed parking for that facility. Infrastructure, I know that this body has reached out to me, both electorally and individually, about spending more money on roads, and we'll be bringing it to you in number. As you may know, chapter ninety money, the state money, we get about a million ninety here. For those of you that, if I can put that in perspective, we did Adams Street over a couple of years ago, from Princeville Parkway to the middle of the line by Lake and Square, there was a million five to do that road. And so the money doesn't go nearly as far as it used to go. The state this year is again awarding us a million nine. I expect, my expectation is that we will more than match the state allocation. It's my hope and plan to bring in a number that will help us with our mains, mains drags around the city, and then a number that will be dedicated to neighborhood streets, working with the board councils on their priorities in those areas. Infrastructure, water and sewer, we continue to make improvements all across the city. It's an old aging system, and it's two important notes on this because it is a direct reflection on everybody's water and sewer. One is the water, in any community, it's water loss, but they call it water loss, but that's why we have an aggressive leak detection system. We're paying for that water because it's monitored, it's metered coming into our city, so we have to pay for that water when it's used and not. So we are, have an aggressive program, we're continuing to be aggressive and to replace those leaky mains where we can. In addition, on the sewer side, what's called INI, inflow infiltration, gets into the source system. That could be from storm dunes, it could go on the marsh of seaweed, and we pay for that, and that goes in on the other end of the system when it's metered on the sewer side. So by making these improvements, it's not only important for the infrastructure, but actually saves ratepayers money going forward. Another important topic I know for this body, and that is the traffic, safety and infrastructure around the city. We are going to be putting some money aside for signal mobilization and reconstruction with six major intersections and four minor intersections. The last two years, we saw the intersection at Quincy Avenue, East and West Howard Street completely rebuilt and aligned, and we worked very hard with our state delegation, it's all state money. North Quincy, as mentioned earlier, North Quincy High School, the corner of Squonam Street and Hancock Streets, a major traffic improvement to that area that's been done. We have, through our state delegation, to go some money for C Street, at least this portion of C Street from Quincy Shore Drive down to roughly where Quincy Park is meeting, is that section to be the first phase, but we're studying and designing a whole car back down to Palm Street. So a lot of improvements coming, I believe that will be helpful to move the traffic around our city. And street lighting, I looked into earlier, we're demanding to convert our sixty-seven hundred streetlights to LED, which are more efficient, spend a lot less electricity on them, as well as a much finer light, and it'll last a lot longer, about ten years for the LED components. Flood control, the next slide, we're, you know, with phase two, as you know, as I mentioned earlier, we've started in West Quincy. We've dealt with a number of projects around the city, more workings have been done, we'll be adding to that. More working is to be done, we'll be adding to that, continuing phase two. And then in the next phase of flood control, we're looking at some serious improvements in the Montlewellison section, because of major, major problems in some of those areas for decades, not just recent years. Kind of flood control, kind of park improvement, kind of environmental benefits, Black's Creek, marsh restoration. And this is where it's a little tricky. The tide gates are part of the permitting that's been in three years by the EPA Act on the tide gates. The marshes interact down there with the tide gate, obviously, and the coastal park. So we're coming forward to this group with some additional appropriation to deal with some of those issues. And we would also be dealing with some marsh restoration, Citywide, as we've done a number of years ago. Again, on the flood control seawalls, as you know, we did a study a few years ago, so I've done an annual study. And we did, actually did a major seawall work on H. Webb Drive and House H. And we'll continue to update those assessments and come back with necessary appropriations. Again, trying to leverage some of those dollars. Every project we see here, we try to leverage dollars, whether it's state, federal grants, or whether we use it other non-taxpayer money in the sense of general fund. For example, the hotel tax, which is funded by visitors, can help us with some of those improvements, as well as the sewer rehab fund, which is paid for by developers, so. Next one, I alluded to it a couple of times, we're looking at several acquisitions of property. I mentioned a couple of Eden Tide. As everybody knows, Eden Tide has been a lead in our city. They moved the Southfield to Wayman, they tried to get some permitting here, and it did work out a few years back, so we developed that facility. A developer has purchased that building, but there are two other passes that go with that building. If you look at the building from Adams Street, there's a portion kind of in front to the right. And then further to the right, if you look at the Old Badger Estate, that property there, we'll be looking to acquire. The CPA has approved it. I think we've got to come back to this body for specifically approval of that project. That will be funded by community preservation money. I think that's a very, very important acquisition for the protection of the Adams story, really, at PCO and Adams Street, so I think that's good. I mentioned the secondary's property already. I mentioned the properties of the Maritime Center, I mentioned the Ryan Post. There's one other one that I'd like to look at, and then present it to you. Those of you that are familiar with the Swanum Morings out behind Fort White East, Swanum Street. There's a very large concrete building that has not been used. It came with the property where the Elder Housing, what was formed, taken the money from the federal government. And then, of course, Elder Housing grounded this part of the portion of the Swanum Morings. That building goes with that property. We think that we would be better to take the property, move the bus behind and off of the marsh, which gets flooded on a regular basis, you have to move the buses several times a year. And then also, the building, public buildings department, which some of that was within the school maintenance department. Used to be the low tech, the low tech was knocked down. It was moved to the base of the Sterling, Sterling's had to be knocked down. You have to find a permanent home for that operation. So I believe this building may fit nicely for those projects. And then, of course, we have a lot of equipment, we have a lot of apartments in our city. Again, we'll be looking at updates, upgrades, and replacements for another piece of equipment. Fight apartment, police apartment, obviously, engines, ladders, bruises. Public works, dump trucks, loaders, sweepers, those all are comparative to what they do in each of the day. Traffic department department, there's some small items there. Looking for the parks, school department, buses, small buses, large buses, and handicap accessible vans. Recreation apartment, some items that will serve the boathouse area. Elder Services, six new handicap vans, to serve the great scenes of our city. And of course, the public buildings will be a piece of equipment as well. That gives you, as I indicated at the start, kind of an executive summary of the work that a number of folks have been doing, putting the information together. I know that was a little long, but there's no quick way to get through that. I can't give you a number tonight, but you'll be hearing from us very soon what that first number will be. Long authorization, and again, we'll be offsetting some of those long numbers with other sources, as I mentioned, community preservation, for example. So I look forward to more deliberation on the specifics when we bring them to you. I look forward to the discussion on the municipal budget for fiscal '17. I thank you for all of the work you do on behalf of the residents of the city. I thank my colleagues in government on the school side, school committee works very hard. I'm in touch on a regular basis with our delegation, with the governor. I'm in touch with Congress with Lynch on a regular basis, as well as some of this marketing and, I mean, warrant. So working very hard, and we've got everybody working together all in the same direction. There may be disagreements in what priorities I have, that's okay. There are nine independent voices up here. There are six independent voices I work with on this movement. But the reality is, just like in every level in government, the infrastructure needs to be addressed. The longer we let it go, the more it costs. So I look forward to future discussions, I thank you for your attention. If you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Counselor Devanna.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you, Mayor, for coming here tonight. I want to thank all the park heads for all the hard work, your entire team. It's a lot of different components of this capital improvement plan. Just, just kind of off the top of my head, just if you were to pick three of the most important components of this five-year capital improvement, what would be the three most important?
We'll find that out when we submit the appropriation house. They're all important, but you know, in the end, there's only so many goals in the fight. You have to make priority, you have to make decisions.
Thank you so much, that's it, I want to thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to make a motion to our brothers to, to finance, Mayor. Look at this plan, and it's, I don't think you left one stone unturned, I think you covered everything in this area. There's the, in terms of sequencing, I think that you sort of alluded to that a little bit. I just think, obviously, everything will have to be financed in some capacity. Whereas we're having a conversation with the city's financial advisor on Monday. We never anticipate, she's obviously aware of this plan. But how are we going to be in a position to kind of continue that conversation if we're going to be sure that prioritization can be used over us, and we're working within our means financially?
I actually agree with that. We have very good discussions with board councils, with our financial advisors. We live within our means. It's always that balance and tightest right. We're being the daily beast, but understanding that in order to continue to maintain services and grow our community, these infrastructure issues have got to be doubled. And I'll repeat it again, and all the experts have indicated, within private sector, public sector, now is the time to do the best with capital improvements because the pasta bar is going to be very cheap. So I don't want to lose that out of the computer.
I can see the line of reasoning there, and I have no question that your administration is constantly contacted by the financial advisor. I think what would be helpful, you know, for this body is that we have an opportunity to engage with our assistant project for this process, sort of we have a full understanding. There's no question that you do the chief executive, you manage the day-to-day. But from a sequencing standpoint, I'm speaking to the city council, it would be very helpful to just keep her voice active in this conversation, so that we can manage. You know, we're going to get our agreement, but we'll do that in a second. And I'm going to make a motion to finance.
All right. For the finance, I can, I just want to briefly say thank you for this evening. This was a very comprehensive plan that you put forth. And really exciting, actually, to see where the city is headed in terms of growth, in terms of where you see the city going over the next five years in terms of capital improvements. But it is an exciting time for the city, on the verge of so many great things. We know we have work to do, and so we know this body is ready to do it. I do want to recognize, as we referenced, several school committee members here this evening. I know Dr. Chris Power was here, Kevin Melty, school committee member, Kathy Hubley, and school committee member Brower Isola, as well as school committee member Emily Lebo. So thank you all for being here, our colleagues in government, and then also cheer department heads, who as a board counselor are extremely helpful. And just I want to thank them for all the work they do on behalf of your administration and being so helpful and gracious every time that I call on them and that I know my colleagues do as well. So thank you very much, Mayor, and with that, we'll just take a brief recess. Thank you very much. Thank you. And we have no, and we have no, it's me, I'm the floor. I'm the floor. Yeah, right, exactly. We're coming, we're coming.
It's all right. Everybody's good.
You're welcome. All right, there's a council member, if you could come back to the well. I'm going to start my remarks. It's me and Counselor Lee A. here. It's all we need though, really, isn't it, Counselor Lee? All right, we will come back to that business board call this meeting, that should order. That's our, be the next item. We're going to go. Yes.
Just to pull House Clay.
Yes, Councilman.
I want to make certain, to that, to the man, but that the mayor can as well consume water. Those are both separate orders, so I was going to make a careful, be signed with the numbers.
Oh, they are, they are. All right, and recognize Counselor Devanna.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President, for taking this hour. It's just a resolution, as well with Councilor Calhoun, who's not here tonight, co-sponsor of this with him. You know, it's come to my attention that the city, Quincy City Council, approximately 36,000 Verizon workers in the company's landline and file division are currently on strike. You know, Verizon forced the workers on strike by demanding that they allow increased offshore and contracted out of good jobs for communities, even after Verizon has already sent thousands of only good union jobs overseas. As you know, Verizon workers are fighting for good, family-supporting jobs. You know, residents and businesses deserve high-quality telecommunications services and state-of-the-art fixed broadband services, not a network that Verizon chooses to neglect, especially in the emergency, by low-skill, poorly motivated replacement workforce. Finally, be it therefore resolved that the city of Quincy finds good jobs and good telecommunications services that are vital to the local communications, and supports striking Verizon workers in a good, in a fight for good jobs and benefit for every worker and the families in their community. I'm just going to move this to strong recommendation.
Motion made, seconded. At this time, I'm going to recognize Counselor La Forest.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm trying to accuse myself of this matter, my husband has reported it's a Verizon union, so I'm going to move this back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor La Forest, thank you. So there's a motion made, seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam President, call roll.
Counselor King, Counselor Pro, Counselor Vaughn, Counselor Finn, Counselor Harris, Counselor La Forest, Counselor Lee A., Counselor O'Leary.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun. President Lewis.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next item, Madam President.
Next item is number five, 2016, 124 appropriation, on the recommendation of the Director of Municipal Finance, and with his approval, it is on the man.
Read the reading.
All right, motion, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Devanna, on the motion. Discussion, seeing none, Madam President, call roll.
Counselor King.
Counselor Pro.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor La Forest.
Yes.
Counselor Lee A.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun. President Lewis.
Yes.
Next item.
Next item is 2016, 124 appropriation, $30,000.
All right, motion, move to approve, seconded by Counselor Devanna, on the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam President, call roll.
Counselor King, Counselor Pro, Counselor Vaughn, Counselor Finn, Counselor Harris, Counselor La Forest, Counselor Lee A., Counselor Calhoun, President Lewis.
Yes.
Seven votes.
All right, thank you very much, Madam President. Next item.
Next item is number seven, on the agenda 2016, 125, that the city clerk hereby direct to notify voters of the city Quincy members of the Democratic, Republican, Green, Red, and United Independent Parties to assemble all voting places in the various wards and precincts as designated on Thursday, September 8, 2016, and Tuesday, November 8, 2016. And then to give the following votes office to. The President, Vice President, United States Senator, General Court, Governor's Counselor, State Senator, Representative and General Court, the first district, Representative and General Court, the second.
Okay, motion made, wait for the reading, okay, thank you. Discuss, is there a motion to approve the motion, motion, or? All right, seconded by Counselor Harris, on the motion. All right, members, if you could call the roll.
Counselor King, Counselor Pro, Counselor Vaughn, Counselor Finn, Counselor Harris, Counselor La Forest, Counselor Lee A., Counselor Calhoun, President Lewis.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is 2016, 146, the pulling hot end, motion, wait for the reading.
And, yes, on the motion, Counselor La Forest. Does the designation of vote, does the amendment change?
No.
Without motion approved. Okay, motion approved, made, seconded by Counselor Lee A. Is there discussion on the motion? I actually do just want to say one thing, I did speak to the clerk regarding some changes. I know folks in Board Five had some questions regarding some pulling places. Counselor Finn might be thinking of the same one that I was going to talk about at the church in five-two. We actually spoke directly about that situation. So we are looking for a solution to that, unfortunately, because it is a presidential year, because there is such a volume of votes and changing polling locations in a year where there is such high turnout, we'd be problematic. According to the clerk, we are going to keep it as it is for this year, but are looking towards the future to change that particular polling location. So I want to make sure everyone knows, we are in discussions for that particular five-two area. And five, it's five-two, and there's one of those. And there are others as well, throughout the city as well. So if you're a board counselor and you've heard that from your constituents, we are taking a look at some of the polling locations for 2017, so. Counselor Finn.
Thank you, Madam President, for raising that, because I was going to suggest that it would be great before we get ourselves with our backup against the next election, but through you, Madam Clark, I would really like to begin to take a look at some of these sites. One that the President has referenced in this is, I have gotten significant, significant complaints related to its accessibility, particularly given the fact that it's, again, significant numbers of seniors that vote in that particular site. And so, to the extent that we can begin to address that now, understand the circumstances and logistics that face presently, but I think it would be great to start to see if we can not come up with viable alternatives.
And we are proposing quite freely, running the city.
Thank you.
All right, for discussion? All right, seeing none, Madam President, call roll.
Counselor King. Councilor Crowe.
Yes.
Councilor La Forest.
Yes.
Councilor King.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
President.
Counselor La Forest.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun. President Lewis.
Yes. Oh, okay, we, Counselor Harris, could not hear your answer, either of the board's constituents. Oh, good. All right, next item.
Uh, counsel... Number nine on the agenda, two thousand sixteen, one twenty-seven, approval of the ethics exemption for school committee member Paul Regoli.
All right, uh, recognize Counselor Devana.
Thank you, Madam President. Can, is there anybody here that can kinda elaborate a little bit more on this and what it really means on this agenda item? I'm just a little confused, I don't really know exactly what we're voting for.
There'd be some opinions here.
Okay, that would be great.
Thank you, yes, sorry, um, Celeste Simmons, if you could come up and just explain the distinction in the sort of small, um, scope of our votes evening, thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, and, um, and Mr. Counsel. Did you receive my memorandum, the package, Mr. Devana? I just wanna make sure that information I tried to convey, that I was aware of.
You know, I did, but I still didn't really understand. I kinda want a little elaboration on it, just to the viewers and other people that are concerned, but I just, no.
No, this would be helpful for everyone, I'm sure. The question before this body is a very limited one. It is whether to approve what's called a section twenty-B exemption. Essentially, what happened here is, Mr. Begoli, whom we know to be an elected official and city's member of the school committee, uh, decided some time ago, when he found out that the, uh, North Quincy High basketball coaching job was vacant, that he would have interest in that position. There were reasons why he has interest, um, together with the fact he was a coach of the soccer team and down at the school already. There were other drivers that aren't relevant to you or your consideration this evening. But in any event, back at that time in March, he made a preliminary approach to the superintendent's office, Mr. Mul, Mr. Mulley called me. Uh, the first thing I told Mr. Mulley was that he should not directly involve himself, nor should the superintendent in anything involving a school committee member who was seeking to do what Mr. Begoli was, because those two offices answer directly to the school committee. So, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent followed that advice and stayed out of the mix, and Mr. Mulley conveyed this information to Mr. Begoli. Now, what I was not aware of back at the time, um, was that in response to this, Mr. Begoli went directly to the State Ethics Commission and sought advice. Uh, he didn't, uh, follow the method followed by a lot of folks and seek it from me directly. He went in town. So, there was something going on in town that I wasn't aware of, and he was good enough to provide, um, for distribution of this body, um, the advisory that he received on March seventh. That advisory is from a State Ethics Commission council, and she tells him that after talking with him, he could seek this position because of two unique factors that were present in this, well, one in the city and one as a result of his decision. First of all, in Quincy, the school committee members are all considered special municipal employees. What that means is that they're in a different category from example, by way of example, you folks. The city council, along with all the appointed officials, are municipal employees and could never apply for a coaching position. I've had this discussion with members of the body before, who are interested in coaching, it's a sincere interest, but it's a balancing test. And because you're members of the council, you give up essentially the right or the ability to even apply for the job. School committee members are special employees and they can apply for this type of position because of their categorization. But beyond that, what Mr. Begoli indicated was that he would forego the salary. And while there are some issues here with the appearance and how things play out, uh, the key factor that State Ethics is concerned with is whether an individual takes City of Quincy, uh, from any governmental entity. You cannot do that, and that's the prohibition in two sixty-eight A, section twenty, that he addressed to State Ethics. In limited conditions, you are able to apply for positions, and what you have to do in those instances is file one of these section twenty, uh, disclosures, they're called. That's what's before you tonight. What this body is required to do is essentially validate the facts that are asserted by Mr. Begoli. One, that he's a special municipal employee. Two, he has said he won't take the salary. That's in the twenty-B disclosure and will be provided to the school department, so he won't get the salary. And that's really it. You are verifying under this particular provision of the State Ethics law that he's to be granted an exemption, he can take the coaching position. He's not gonna accept pay. Now, I know that I've received calls from a couple of you who spoke with members of the body and with Madam President about the fact that there's another issue that somewhat surfaced, and that's the appearance of this whole matter, that a school committee member has applied for a job, and in the eyes of some, this looks, um, well, it doesn't look good, and there are people questioning. It's referred to under two sixty-eight A as the appearance of impropriety, and that's regulated by a particular provision of two sixty-eight A that, again, Mr. Begoli complied with and complied with in a timely fashion. This was something I was not aware of, but, um, I learned and I verified with Madam Clerk that Mr. Begoli filed a section twenty-three B three disclosure, it's called, that's just another provision within the act. And in it, he disclosed back on March twenty-two that he was gonna apply for the position. Now, in talking with the chief legal counsel of the State Ethics Commission, um, and running this buyer, she advised me that the primary thing they'd be looking at here on this section twenty-three B three, which is not before you, the primary thing they're concerned about is, had, by way of example, Mr. Begoli heard, as a result of being a school committee member, that this coaching job is gonna be open. And before it was advertised publicly, he said, "I'd like to apply for that." And because he's a special municipal employee, the school department said, "That'll be fine, they'll give you the position, we won't advertise it." And then he just filed one of those extensions, says before you tonight. Well, he didn't do that, and more importantly, the school department didn't do this. They still placed a public ad, they took in applications from people. From what I understand, reviewing the matter after the fact, there were six applicants for the position. They filed full applications, all the necessary paperwork, and they were interviewed by a screening committee. So, there was a proper and public process, starting with an advertisement, the job was posted and open, and Mr. Begoli responded to that process. Because of that, State Ethics is of the general opinion that as long as he provides this disclosure, which he did prior to interviewing, which is critical, then he is eligible to interview for the job. His candidacy was in the mix, and although there are those who criticize, um, his selection, and I'm not here to comment either way, and you're not here to evaluate either way, um, he was selected by the screening committee. He's coached at the high school before, he's coached girls at the high school continuously for a long period of time. Why the committee decided what they did, I'm not certain, but they did make that decision. While that decision is not to be second-guess, um, although it could be by the school committee if it wished to. What is before you this evening is just this twenty-B waiver confirming in a document that's going to be signed by Madam Clerk, should you vote to affirm it, um, simply that the facts that are laid out in this twenty-B disclosure, special municipal employee, not taking the salary, selected by the committee, I believe is in there, um, that those facts are correct and that we've got a public, um, disclosure of those facts. So that's what's before you this evening, it's somewhat limited, and I'm not trying to circumscribe your role, just trying to explain and make certain that you understand that some of what, uh, you know, some of the concerns that have been raised here, they just, you know, aren't steps totally or under our charter, it's too aggressive.
I, I would like this, is, we are not in the appointment process at all, this body. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I know that Mr. Begoli had been a soccer coach for the last four years, as a school committee member, was not paid at all for those four years of being a coach, is that correct?
Well, that I'm not really sure of. I don't know that much about the machinations, I just know that he's represented, he won't take his salary going forward.
I just wanna make sure that the body and the viewers know that we are not part of this process for appointed, um, of this coach. Is that correct?
That's, oh, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, that's all I wanna do right here, right now. Thank you.
Counselor King.
Well, thank you, Madam President. And I wanna thank my colleague, Counselor Bone, for clarifying this. And I can't tell you how relieved that we are not in a position of engaging with qualifications of coaches. You might be surprised, I probably have a lot more opinions of that than anyone would be interested in, but I, I think that there's a perception out there, given the nature of the calls that I received, I'm going to speak for myself, that a misperception, maybe a better term, that somehow we have some sort of discretionary power in relation to voting his positioning up or down, and that's not what we're here to do at all.
That's correct, right. You're confirming the exemption. I, it was brought to my attention today that someone has put out, um, for, you know, public consumption, the notion that this body is going to approve, um, an ethics violation.
Yeah, yeah, it's very, very confusing, but the information that they now, for the most part, quite seriously misinformation. In saying that, I'm not suggesting that concerns anyone has, parents or members of the school body may have in relation, but I don't wish to minimize those. But if they had difficulty, their place for recourse related to that would be who? The, uh, the principal, starting with the principal, or how would that work?
Yes, the way, under every form since nineteen ninety-three, four, um, there's a hierarchy, and it does, that the principal is supposed to manage that building, and the principal answers to the superintendent. In this particular instance, as I said, um, I, because of the dynamics involved, a school committee member, I think the, um, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent are out of the mix, they have to be. So, one who has a concern could either go to the principal and verify what process occurred, um, or if they wish to raise a concern further, they can go to the State Ethics Commission directly. Uh, 'cause the State Ethics Commission has been involved in this since March. Again, I indicated there was something I wasn't aware of. Back in March, when I was asked, I was aware of the twenty-three B problems, the appearance of impropriety, the perception issues, and it's somewhat regrettable that that wasn't a little more considered along the way, back at that time, when decisions were made. Uh, because it is tough, and it puts a lot of people in a very difficult position, but the fact of the matter is, the law sets out certain processes, um, and, and special municipal employees are eligible for precisely what Mr. Begoli has sought to do here. He got information for the State Ethics and followed it, uh, precisely.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, good evening, Mr. Simmons, I just want to, I, I wanna repeat, and I probably would sound like a broken record, that, again, this appointment has already been made, and so that's not a question that's before the bodies, right? And to speak to that, you did send us a, a memorandum that does say here that a committee of four, consisting of the school principal, the athletic director, a QEA representative, and a parent representative interviewed Mrs. Candice, and the committee ultimately selected Mr. Begoli. So, that selection has already been done, which was in front of us today, again, gonna sound like a broken record, but is to make sure that, you know, ethically, he went through the process properly and can accept this position that was not appointed by us. Um, is that correct?
Right. Once that selection's made, your role is essentially to confirm just certain basic facts, and that, that goes into the, the State Ethics Commission, and it will be held in the office of the city clerk.
Okay, and so he's already been selected for the committee, and I, the only question I have for you, and I don't know if this would be something that would require a minister session, maybe online, but, um, I would only ask that the next time that something like this happens, where someone does have to file through you or through the State Ethics Commission, you know, the possibility to apply for a job where there might be some conflict that is brought before us, uh, before that application process starts, because, you know, had Mr. Begoli come in front of us and said, "You know, I'm looking to apply for this position, there are ethics papers that I have to file here, I just wanna make sure that, you know, that in front of the council, I can apply for this position," you know, that process, I think, would have been a little bit clearer moving forward versus him already being appointed this, this job here, and then having to come in front of us and say, "It's okay, I can accept this position." Do you understand what I'm saying? I think that, but if that's going to go for, um, a position like he has, I, you know, raises some questions. If they're going to be going through and applying for the, um, for this ethics award here, that they come in front of us, if they do have to, you know, and say, "Ethically, I get the job," I wanna make sure that it's something that I felt was possible. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Understood. I may yield to Madam President.
I think that's it. Precisely what we're saying is not within our purview this evening. This isn't an appointment that we do or don't do, this is a hiring process that the, uh, principal and other members of this particular committee are engaged in, and I know, um, I, I applaud your thoughts to open up, you know, be transparent, but, again, I think that the distinction here is that that, that's not a process that involves us at all, so, so I, I, I just wanna make sure of that, that the distinction there. But, um, Mr. Celeste, if you think too.
Well, I would just say that, um, under every form, for this particular category of work, um, there was a real structure set up within the Commonwealth as to how, uh, school systems work in a community, and it made accountability greater by designating responsibility in certain particular individuals. The principal is responsible for the school, and the principal answers to the superintendent. And so, our superintendent in Quincy has a very distinct and particular role, and that's overseeing the performance of principals. And then the superintendent answers to the school committee, responds directly to them. So, because of that structure that's in place, um, there is the type of oversight and accountability you're talking about, but it's all in a, it's in the product and building, not here at City Hall.
Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Celeste, Jim, good evening. Just, be expensive not rehashing everything, so, I just wanna make one little comment and thank those folks who did take the time to reach out, kinda communicate, you know, they were viewing the situation at that point in time. I do think there is a clear delineation that we were not part of the interview process, that, that...
Was that my sentence again?
We were not part of the interview process of the candidates, that that was a separate event that happened outside of this body. And boiled it down to what our function is here this evening, is whether or not the finding put forth by the State Ethics Commission is indeed accurate, correct?
Right. You may recall that this was on the previous, the prior agenda, and no one knew anything about it. And, um, you know, there are reasons for that, but essentially what happened was, the mayor said to me, "You have to please review this for me, find out what went on." I started making my phone calls, knowing that, um, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent were out of it, weren't gonna have a lot of information for me, and I did deal directly with State Ethics and a few others, um, but I didn't get any help... did deal directly with State Ethics and a few others, but I didn't get any help from anyone in this body, because you didn't know anything about it. I started hearing from you guys today, after our weekend of, you know, input from constituents in the interim. And I understand that, I understand, you know, the concerns these folks have or raising them, I agree with them, and they're legitimate concerns, but this process is complied and will be found compliant by State Ethics.
And that's what I wanted to, you know, not diminish the folks who did take time out of their busy schedules to communicate, you know, how they felt on a particular subject, but if we're stepping away from principles or personalities and the principal areas we're talking about finding before by the State Ethics Commission, that's it.
That's correct.
So, thank you.
All right, anything further? End of the discussion. All right, is there a motion to? Okay, thank you. Counsel Finn, motion made by Counsel Finn, seconded by Counselor, seconded by Counselor Harris, there we go. All right, all the further, seeing go for the discussion, Madam Clerk, call.
Counsel King.
Counsel Croll.
Counsel Warren.
Counsel Harris.
Counsel Harris.
Counsel Morris.
Counsel Harris.
Counsel Lee.
Counsel Lee.
Counsel Murray.
President Hughes.
Yes.
And the next item, Madam Clerk.
This is 2016-128, nomination election of the Quincy City Council of three members of the park and recreation board, one member will be in the school committee, Paul Doherty, Michael Morton, and Paul McGrawley.
Okay, recognize Counsel Croll.
Motion, thank you, Madam Chairman, I did also want to point out that recreation board, park recreation board, you may even know, is out in the audience as well. Having served in the capacity before coming into the city council, I do come from the farm, I took over the board too when I left. This is such a critical part, such a neat board to participate in from a city perspective, and as we all know, there's tremendous amount of work to be done with, particularly all the movement going on in art, so I just wanted to second the motion and just express my gratitude for the men who have been serving on the board, but I just think it was just a fabulous experience, and I appreciate your time and your visit, very important. Thank you.
All right, motion made by Counsel Croll, seconded by Counsel Devine. Counsel Croll, motion, did you want to?
Thank you, Madam Hughes, I just want to thank you, you do a great job up there at the park department as well, with park and recreation board, as well as assigning here the park side, and Perry Marshall was here earlier with the recreation park, there's so many different components of this throughout the entire city. If you look around at all the parks, there's not a place you can look to, there's not a beautiful facility of park, the kids can go and play, the recreation, the park does a great job as well, along with the season Olympics that's coming up very soon, which we all got a little bit of life to. So I just want to thank all your hard work over there, it's a new group that's been through there, and I want to thank you for everything you guys did, thank you. Second motion.
All right, motion made, seconded by Counsel Devine. On the motion, anyone? All right, Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll, and to remind Counselors, it's necessary to say the names of all three appointees, so the clerk will remind you of the names.
Paul Doherty, Michael Morton, and Paul McGrawley. Counsel King. Counsel Croll.
Paul Doherty, Michael Norton, Paul McGrawley.
Counsel Croll.
Paul Doherty, Michael Norton, Paul McGrawley.
Counsel King.
Paul Doherty, Michael Norton, Paul McGrawley.
Counsel Harris.
Paul Doherty, Michael Norton, Paul McGrawley.
Counsel Morris.
Paul Doherty, Michael Norton, Paul McGrawley.
Counsel Lee.
Paul Doherty, Michael Norton, Paul McGrawley.
President Hughes.
Michael Norton, Paul McGrawley, Paul Doherty. Thank you. Good luck to everyone. Thank you, Mr. Nolan, spare your service. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is a gift number 11, 2016-129, theater gave to the city of Quincy accept the following gift upon condition attached here and set forth, donor various donors, a gift of $21,300 for various local charities, made and cherished couple, and...
All right. Motion to accept the gift made by Counsel Croll, seconded by Counsel Finn, if you call the roll, Madam Clerk, please.
Counsel King, Counsel Croll, Counsel Devine, Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Morris.
Yes.
Counsel Lee.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes. Six members.
Next item is number 20, 2016-130, theater gave to the city of Quincy accept the following gift upon condition attached here and set forth, donor various donors with $1,400 for theater program.
Motion.
We need to move the roll over and call if you would mind, $7,000, thank you.
All right, motion made by Counsel Croll, seconded by Counselor Finn, on the motion, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Counsel King, Counsel Croll, Counsel Devine, Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Morris.
Yes.
Counsel Lee.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Okay, we have number 13, 2016-131, another gift, theater gave to the city of Quincy accept the following gift upon condition attached...
Motion made by Counsel Croll.
For the free, no, two, four, and send a letter, thanks.
All right, seconded by Counsel Finn, Madam Clerk, on the motion.
Counsel Croll.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Morris.
Yes.
Counsel Lee.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes. Six, seven. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is communications and reports from the mayor or other city offices and city boards. None? Unfinished business or preceding meeting? None? Reports of committees? Yes. Yes, okay, at this time we'll adjourn at the regular meeting and move to our finance committee. Thank you.
thank you for staying with us. I was friends with some marathons, so they give them a way out of there. We left all, Counsel Finn, I don't know if you still had more substance that you wanted to cover, but I know that we were coming up against a number, and felt like I was probably short, so I guess I wasn't.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, our court committees, for keeping heads up. They say there's three signs when you're getting old, one is you lose your memory, and I can't remember what the other two are at this point, but if I wasn't finished, I'm pretty much, I think the major thing is, I think there've been certain questions that are raised, and I know this administration's waiting for a vote per se, but the one thing that, because it is something I've been concerned with in the past, is, again, yes, issues specifically around the purchase of the property. And before I would feel comfortable voting, I'm not uncomfortable in supporting the basic concept of what's trying to be achieved there at all, but I would like to receive that information at some point prior to the vote, and I know our next meeting is on May 16th, but again, I leave that to the discretion of the chair, but that's pretty much what I feel on the issue of this.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel Finn, willing to counsel the act.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the mayor, and I would like to speak to us, answering questions on this. Just a couple of questions for you, when you're going through the presentation that popped up, imagine your presentation against the project and breakdown that was given to us, in and out, and so the first question I have, the first question I have with that is regarding the pocket purchase and relocation cost. It says here in the project files that was given to us on this printout that it was $5.24 million, and on your presentation it came out as $5,014,000, so there's a discrepancy about $1,000,000, and I just wanted to know, if you can clarify what that discrepancy is?
Yes, although I will work with the city solicitor on that discrepancy, in that there were, there are costs such as the changing of the locks, that I may have categorized as a construction cost, yet on your worksheet might be categorized as a property acquisition relocation cost. So there were several dozen very small charges, $1,000 or $1,200, but I'm sure they can add up to be just how I interpreted the breakdown between property acquisition and versus construction costs. We can, they're all baked into the total number that we have, so we can try to get back to you on what'd be $100,000 discrepancy is due to. Also, the city solicitor informed Counsel Finn's question during the break, he gave the information, so I'd also like, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, to allow you to speak on Counsel Finn's question. Please do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I went and reviewed the data that I got, and I'll just go over, there are nine acquisitions, and you recall the process here, because one thing we did, it was very public, and it came before you, before we took any steps. The project had to be announced at North Quincy, or was announced at North Quincy High School, and one of the problems was relative to the acquisition of properties, I was playing some catch-up with the homeowners, and it was very difficult for them, and in some instances a little dramatic, but ultimately, things worked very well, and homeowners were terrific to deal with, notwithstanding how difficult the matter was. I'd say with one exception, it was a little difficult, but other than that, we had eight homeowners who worked very cooperatively, notwithstanding the personal difficulty. Now, I'm going to go through them by address, 20 Hunt Street, the appraisal was $595,000, the final price paid, reflected on the deed, was $650,000. That's an approximate 10% deviation.
That's reference to the tax, the tax assessment. Again, we're talking about the valuation of the assessed valuation of the property, presuming it's the tax, what I'm talking about, the appraisal that you've had done, what I'm asking is about what it says in the charter, whenever it's 25% higher than its average assessed valuation during the previous three years. And that was a question, you're absolutely right, I'm not, you guys exposed this right from the start, I believe I'm the last person who wanted to hear the position of these things being perceived as eminent domain, but the bottom line is, as I understand our charter, and as I understand it, is that anytime it's higher than that, then it says you shall not, shall not purchase, but shall be taken as fore-said, which means that there needs to be some kind of other process related to it. And I asked that question right at the beginning of the time, and I, when we started this whole back in 2014, and it was basically articulated at that point, that there shouldn't be any problem or issue with that. So it's not the appraisal, it's the assessment, the tax assessment, from what I understand, unless I'm wrong of interpreting the charter, I don't know.
Well, you're reading the charter provision properly, but the fact of the matter is, the whole project was brought before the body had voted on, and the procedure to implement the project, the procedure to acquire the properties, that was all voted on.
Yeah, I understand that, Mr. Chairman, and you know, it can be like war and wolf, if you go back to the tape, but I asked you back then, in 2014, as to the issues related to tax assessment, and what problems that that might present in relation to this, some of these falling into matters of eminent domain. And when I went back and I looked through what we have from the auditor coming from the union, it was certain prices, and some of those prices, I think you readily admit, vary a great deal, and so all I'm just looking for is some clarification specifically to that issue. And I don't, I don't know if we went through that process or not, but I voted, and I understand that, I voted, I voted for you to be able to negotiate those, but at that time, you raised that question, and it was put forward at that time that that should probably would not be an issue, so I'm just, that's, I'm just raising it again now, that's all.
I'm not sure what to say, because you voted to approve a process, well, perhaps you didn't, I don't know what the vote was, but I know the body voted to approve a process that we followed.
The body had no, the body that was presented had no specific numbers relating to that. What we did is we voted to authorize you to negotiate those prices, but the point was raised at the time, that there's a specific issue, and granted that authorization was, what's the game plan if it exceeds 25% of that? What, then in turn, what would we do?
Well, that's what I'm trying to say to you, in no instance did we see 25%.
Of the tax assessment.
No, of the appraisals.
And again, I'm just going to circle, so I, and that's, either we can get that, I tried to seek that information through the assessments office and through the auditor, but the bottom line is, it's not the appraisal that's an issue here, it's the tax valuation, the assessed valuation of those properties. And part of it, from, again, is, you know, you're back here now, and you're in a situation saying that this was a significant part of the costs associated with this, because something is done by eminent domain, doesn't necessarily mean the cost is lower, but it ensures certain checks and balances in relation to that process, that it is exceeding certain evaluations placed on it. That's the only part I'm trying to make, I think I've been pretty consistent, is the difficulty I had to hold issue around firm staff at the time, and I still have those issues today. And all I'm saying is, I, like everybody else, climb on a lot of them to support these projects, and I believe in the council, but all for it, took a lot of heat for being all for it, but at the same point in time, I wanted to have some sense... But at the same point in time, I wanted to have some sense for assurance that this was done the way it should be, plain and simple. And I, and that's all I'm asking. I don't know what those are, but I'm certain I can get that from the assessor and the law.
All right, well, I, I remain puzzled, completely puzzled, because for whatever reason, you refuse to acknowledge that there was a council presentation followed by a council vote, at which the body was told that approximately $4.00 million was going to be devoted for acquisition funding, and there would be a procedure followed for appraisals and then the acquisitions. And this, this has been going on for quite some time now, and I, I don't quite know how to answer the question.
And I don't, I, quite honestly, with all due respect, with all due respect, I'm in the same boat. We've reached what philosophers might call inconveniability there.
This, Mr. Chairman, I'm concerned how the rules of this committee would proceed, but I understand when I'm trying to answer questions, I should at least have the threshold courtesy of not being interrupted by someone who apparently didn't hear what I said in 2014. Maybe this was the problem, I don't know.
As a matter of personal, as a matter of personal privilege, Mr. Chairman, as a matter of personal privilege, that is an uncommon attack relation to me. He's suggesting that I don't listen, he's suggesting that I have some other motivation in relation to this. My question is pretty simple, and I asked it of you in 2014, it's the very same question. And when these prices went, it wasn't like anybody was coming back to this body and saying, hey, you know, these prices are way over what we thought they were going to be. But you know what? That's what the charter exists for. That's the reason, that's the purpose. You are absolutely right that I voted, along with my colleagues at that time, to authorize the mayor to enter into negotiations based on the budget estimates that he had to purchase these properties, and to, and to have so-called friendly terms, and not attempt to exercise eminent domain. But Section 30 is Section 30, and if you're telling me, maybe we're, maybe we're resolved with it, I don't know, maybe we are. But it's not a matter of me not listening, and I resent being characterized that specific way, because it's just not true. I could make the same suggestion back, because I know, I've clearly raised it, I didn't clearly raise it just this time, but I also raised it with firmest app at that time, in terms of those specific guidance for disposition or purchase of real property under our city charter, and how we go about it, and what role this body plays within the context of that. And so, I thought you were going to tell me there was no problem, Steve, but clearly, you're coming back and talking to me about appraisals and the great buys you got, which could well be true. But that's not, what governs some of the law?
All right, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I will apologize to the member, and I'll apologize to the body, to each member, if a member feels an affront when I state factually that I'm being interrupted by that member. All right? So I'm just trying to get the facts out as I am seeing them, make them clear, not just to the person who asked me the question, but the entire body. And it's difficult for me to cohesively explain what went on three and a half years ago, when several of the members were not members of the body, if I'm being interrupted in the middle of my answer. So I apologize if that happened. What I will do is, if we're going to talk about specific provisions, I'll invoke Rule 19 of the City Council Rules, and ask that the member present to me his question in writing, so I can get the information and answer it. I'm just very surprised that this is coming up now. I thought I was answering the question that was asked, but what I'll do is, rather than continuing the back and forth here, because it's clear there's a systemic issue on this particular point, that I am happy to get in writing the question, to the extent I don't understand it, I'll seek clarification, I'll make sure that I get the full answer with the questions. Because I'm very puzzled right now about the fact that a process that's gone on and been public for quite some time, there remains an issue of this nature about a very fundamental matter. So I would just ask Counselor Finn, that you present the question to me in writing, we'll get everything clarified and aired out, and I'll answer it for you. Notwithstanding, you know, I'm not suggesting that we delay anything tonight, or that it impacted project, I'll mention the answer, because the houses are down, and they've been purchased, and this question is more about a process issue. I think I understand why you're asking it, but I'll make sure you understand fully what the process was, and how we proceeded. So the information I have, I don't think answers the question. So I may ask, I may ask Mr. Shea to come back up. I thought I was answering the question, but I'm not able to.
Before we go to the next speaker, Counselor Finn, is that amenable to you, submission of?
Well, first, I should probably say thank you for such gracious apology, but, and again, I, but I have to, as again, it's a matter of personal privilege, articulate the same level of puzzle. So I, I find this solution, from my perspective, is acceptable, and I'm happy to put that question into writing. And for what I believe, I can, I want to seek clarification in relation to that, these purchases in relation to real property. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want people to bring back up the city solicitor thing, but I, I'd like to know these nine properties, and if we could, if you could state which ones were the two families, on some of the numbers that we just kind of stated.
You want to hear them now?
Yeah, that's okay. We're going to go through them.
I'm happy.
Sure.
The first property was 20 Hunt Street. That was a two-family.
Okay.
All right? That, I gave the numbers, five, do you have the numbers in front of you?
I do not.
All right. I, the numbers were $595 appraisal, $650 sale price. The next property was a single-family home, 22 Hunt. Appraisal value, $385,000. Sale price, $425. The next property, another single-family, 24 Hunt, actually the exact same numbers, $385, $425. The next property was 26 Hunt. That was, I believe, another two-family. They may have only been a one-family. But in any event, the price was, the appraisal, $450, sale price, $515. The next property, 30 Hunt, was a two-family. The appraisal, $425, sale price, $525. That is the first one where the deviation was not right at 10%. This was just slightly over 20% of the appraised value. That was the last property that was sold, so there was a gap between the appraisal and the sale date, which partially explains it, but it was just a little over 20%. The next property, 34 Hunt, single-family, $420 appraisal, $450 sale price. Then there was a, another property, this says 38 to 40 Hunt, but I don't recall it being a two-family. But the appraisal was $400, sale price, $480. The next property, 4244 Hunt, this was a two-family, it's the last property on Hunt Street before the local pathway in. The appraisal was $450, sale price, $520. That one is, again, near the 20% delta, but it's less than 20. So we had three properties, all two-families, one a little over 20, one at 20%, and one slightly below. And then the last one is another single-family, that was 125 New Real, $400,000 appraisal, $450 sale price, so that's just slightly over 10% deviation.
So four multi-families, four two-families in there, five singles.
Right, yes.
It's just because the numbers are high, and because they're two-families, you're going to get those rents out there, the rent out there, 20 Hunt Street is high. So that's why those values are not, in a little defense of why they're that high, is because they're two-families.
That's what happened on Hunt Street at that time, was the market, well, in North Quincy, I should say, the market for two-families took off.
That's what happened?
Yes, from the time this project happened.
Over the 2014 to whenever it was acted.
Right.
In a nutshell, Mr. Chairman, if we don't approve this, will this project get done? Is it already, I mean, I've been by there the last few, maybe a week ago, and it's just like you're in the picture, it's all dirt. Will this project get finished if we don't approve the 2.75?
Well, I know that's a, I know how timely this is, time preparing our particular components of it, how timely the request. The mayor's here for a reason tonight. I don't know the exactness of that, I would ask the engineer in charge of the project to tell you that, but obviously, not only completing it, but spending the maximum amount of time possible while the school is not in session is one of the desired approaches here, one of the issues. Yes, now.
My, my last question is, can I get these conditions that we're going to get a monthly report on this whole project? Can I get that from any clarification? If we can get a monthly report, you know, June 1st, July 1st, August 1st, September 1st, so we know all, these are the numbers that we're at?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree, Mr. Chairman, I would request that we be on the 15th, and the contract invoice is coming on the first.
Okay.
It'll be a 15 days, you'll be able to cycle and cash your bill by the 15th.
Okay. So I have those conditions, I'm going to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Mr. Shea. I am going to go to Mr. Harris, and then, you know, I have a couple of questions for him as well. So Counselor Harris.
Well, I can say this, you know, I came onto this council pretty unawed, you know, a different way. I didn't get elected. But what I did, when I was running for office, I told the people in my ward that I was going to do good things, that I was going to do great things for them. This project, for that area, is a great thing. Right now, all that's going on right now is softly imported in, in open moves. We just asked a question, spent some time, it was all public record, all these buildings that were bought and the prices. People in that area, that people in that area needs this, we need to stay, move on. And I, I want to make a motion to move the motion. I want to move the motion.
Move a motion on the floor, and I'd like to speak on the floor. If you'd mind me to, Mr. Shea. Talking through the National Grid piece, obviously, are you hired as a consultant engineer, or is there some sort of whole affect, like is there a set of consultants and a set of engineers, or kind of all, who comes?
We are the engineer of record for the project. We do not work for National Grid. National Grid has their own engineering firm called Controlpoint that we work, negotiate with, and trade engineering designs with, to make sure that the utility side of the design and the project align with the city's components and requirements. We do not work for National Grid.
Right. No, I just didn't know if there was like a master consultant along with yourself as an engineer. I mean, we've worked with you enough in various projects, you know, I can see you by standing professionally, you know yourself, you do a homework. And Counselor Harris, I just want to point out that as a board council, I think that's, you know, that's firm application, and that's exactly what the residents of the board seems expected as a board council. I can certainly appreciate that. What I'm struggling with is the budgetary piece, and I know that we had spoken about that, and I will continue to speak about it. When you, when you talk about National Grid, okay, so here we are in the bottom of the eighth inning, right? It's $333,000 and change left to do this project, part of the original $12 million to be appropriate. Those are the numbers that I have. And now we have a communication from stakeholders, I view National Grid as a major stakeholder in this project, and we're assuming you do as well. What's the conversation from, I need to work with the consultant, the engineer, does that not known by National Grid in secondary? That's, that's what I'm a little perplexed about.
I'm sorry, Counselor, I just want to understand.
Wait, do we not know about the anticipated National Grid? I'm struggling with the idea of National Grid not knowing that they would have had to do, what, $1.7 million of work?
To declare National Grid's, National Grid's component of this work was significantly smaller than electrical, when the electrical service was coming in overhead and was coming off of the poles that it suffered from. When the electrical system started to become compromised, as the mayor indicated, some people may know, some may not, but when the electric power poles on Hunt Street fell down, it appeared that the homes had been pulled in. We went back to N Grid and started to talk about the costs to underground the system, how this possibly worked. We did several workshops with National Grid, most recently with that board of earth, to try to negotiate the right design activity. But it is a fundamentally different project to bring your electrical service in underground by undergrounding the whole street, and just bring it over there. So National Grid knew they would have costs and charges. They were not in the order of magnitude that they are now. The request that we have before you, $302,000 is a National Grid cost. To make clear, National Grid's cost is not $1,000, $302,000.
Essentially, what we're talking through here is a project that is over budget, and that piece above transporting the ground, the wires underground, that's an aesthetic decision, policy, is it correct?
In my opinion, it is more than aesthetics because of the age of the electrical system and the condition of the electrical system. It's a service improving component, that's what.
But to the other side of that, I would have to think, I don't work in the field, I'm very quick to point out where my shortcomings are, and in this particular case, I don't know what happens underground, but as a, as a land, I would have to think that service, once you go underground in high-power electrical, when you talk of transformer, various conduits, you know, I would have to think that the service component cost goes up, because it's not as readily accessible for the human eye of hand, or, maybe I'm wrong, just trying to understand.
Respectfully, it does not go up now with modern construction methods, very tight construction. You also don't lose all the tree branches, cannot impact your electrical system. You do not have to worry about the aging power poles, specific Hunt Street, which one of them fell down. So I'm not an electrical system maintainer, but new electrical systems are all going in underground, they're not coming in overhead anymore, and the cost of actually less underground. And there is, there is an aesthetic component, a aesthetic component.
So there's the option essentially to take the project from here going forward, leave the electrical underground versus underground. Is that an option?
That is correct, and that component hasn't been awarded to the contract.
So was it $1.7 million for bringing it underground, $1.2?
$1.2 for all the elements bringing it underground on Street.
So my, my point, much to the sentiment of, you know, Counselor Harris, I think public safety improvement is amazing, and I think creating a first-class facility for children in the city is fantastic. I've been exploring the parks in my entire time here, and worked with many of the folks in the audience to really deliver something nice yesterday. But I'm thinking, we're looking at a project, we're essentially, we're paid for housing by about a million bucks, and I know I have a conversation with the mayor in terms of how he may have dealt with that. how he may have dealt with that. Now, we're looking at sort of a style preference, pulls up, pulls down. They could potentially scale the project back by 1.2 million dollars. So, um, my, if you counsel, then I want to just ask, are you satisfied with the information that was, because there is a motion for it to be given here this evening?
Sir, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm ready for this. Yeah, yeah. The mayor did earlier this evening outline a capital vision for the future that obviously, again, in my opinion, it's great credit to him because I have often sat and listened to others who said you can't get certain, certain things done. And I admire and I respect that tremendously. But as we move forward, I think it's important that, uh, that we remember what our function is here as well, moving forward, that in terms of certain information asked for and requested and that also, if we're willing to climb out on that limb, it's not fun getting a spot off in back of you. So some of that information, uh, coming, that kind of minimizes some of the certain surprise components to it would be deeply appreciated as well. I'm not going to obstruct this thing, but there's no one, I believe in the project itself. I'm more than willing, based on the solicitor's offer, uh, to take this discussion offline so we can resolve it once and for all in terms of, of what that is. And, and saying that, I'm willing to admit that I might be totally off-base in terms of that issue or what my concern is. Um, but I would say this, um, and again, due respect to the honorable gentleman from Ward 6, Ward 6 is my home as well and I believe, I know the importance of this, but having sat here as long as I have, I can assure you that public record means a great deal more than just newspaper articles that appear in the leg. A lot of what that public record that we're talking about is supposed to be created here at this body. And we do that by asking some of the disturbing and difficult questions that go into this just as the chairman has this evening. So again, I, I, I'm not gonna, obviously, I, I think the will of the bodies moving forward. And, uh, again, I'm, I've already paid the price in various respects for supporting this project. But I, I, again, I believe in it. I don't want to have the appearance of being obstructionist. Not every question is meant to be obstructionist. It's meant just to simply ask, are we doing this properly in the right way? So, again, I leave it to your discretion, uh, Mr. Chairman, in terms of how you wish to move forward.
I just wanted you to, you recognize.
I appreciate that very much.
Data, data in this community is, uh, very important. And I don't know, Mayor, if you, uh, had something that you wanted to add, but I see that point, from this, and so.
If I might.
Please.
I, I appreciate the comments and during the community pres- reservations alluded to the capital improvement plan. We talked about process going forward. Why don't you spend more time with each of you on that process, this section take? Uh, you know, I know the question was asked in finance about the, the house to go for more than you thought. That is true. And the question was, well, why didn't you comment then? Well, the base weren't open yet on the total project. You thought we had to go make that up with the visit of the project. Uh, that, that's, that's an important point. Another important point is, as we've been doing road reconstruction in the city, this administration, which has been very different from the last several months under criticism, is a decision on how you're spending money. We've been doing infrastructure work on all those roads. Rather than just painting the roads black, we've been doing a lot of infrastructure work, whether it's water, sewer, and the gas company has stepped up the National Grid, investing a lot in gas replacements as well. The electrical piece didn't come up early on. We didn't see that. But as we go through the process and we're able to do civil engineering, not open up Hunt Street because of the sewer water issues, it makes sense to do it now. You know, Hunt Street is just as worthy, in my opinion, as fighting the street or any other street we do this in. In that capital plan that we're going to be putting before you, we're going to start talking about underground utilities in other sections of the city, including the water and the street in Ward 2. Counselor Forrest alluded early to the investment in the area. We're going to be discussing with this body, the development of the areas of the T. There's a new condominium proposal that was approved, a new reality that develops this project. We're seeing revitalization of investment in that area and it's, it's been a large property because of the best investment you can make, uh, along with us in the future of our city. So, you know, I hate to be short-changed in the project in the sense, um, you know, had we known the numbers, we would have been, uh, we would have, we would have shared those numbers, um, but the numbers have been higher than we expected. And sometimes when you start the process, by two or two and a half years out, instruction numbers blow up. I, I gotta tell the founder story, Pat Long, I remember saying to him, uh, you're gonna write a story criticizing we need to move in these people out of their homes, then you gotta write a story saying we paid too much for homes. We can't have a both-way government, both ways. We negotiate in good faith. We try to, it's a traumatic thing for people to move out of their homes. We did not use the M F domain process, we used a negotiation process. And I stand by that. I think, I think Mr. Tim has a good job. Notwithstanding clarification, Counselor Finn needs and deserves, we'll make sure that happens. I just don't want us to look back and say, please, we had the opportunity, the work was over, why didn't we do it? We've been going the other way in all our projects. Every time we've seen something to be aggressive, uh, really aggressive about our infrastructure. So I, I think it's worthy, Hunt Street's just as worthy as any other street in the city. And I appreciate your attention to this and all these decisions, you use the term of out on a limb. I don't want to see you out on a limb, Counselor, uh, at all. But, you know, sometimes things happen, decisions are hard, uh, and, uh, you know, we're going to make a lot more than in the coming days, weeks and months ahead on any construction improvements. I appreciate your, your attentions and, and.
Thank you, Mayor. If I sort of paraphrase what you would share, I think all streets, I think what all are in the city are important. The struggle that I have is when you have a budget to do a project, you have a budget to do a project. And when we're facing an opportunity of keeping the poles up, reporting the money, and that's a substantial cost save. So I feel like if you're overpaid loans, and I understand that's market driven, it's nothing really that we can control. And it's now around a point where we can say to ourselves, well, we can keep the poles up, we'll keep the poles down, keep costs further in line. And I guess I disagree with you respectfully in terms of that decision. And that's okay, absolutely. But the other side of that too, when we think about financing, you take a $12 million project, if you were very firm in this in the beginning, and you add 2.75 to it, right? So you're going to use the proceeds from Central to basically cover that 2.75. And the original bonding loan is somewhere to be about 9 million bucks, right? And the first start of betting was back in 2014. My question to you is, free cash is about 2.8 million dollars right now? Why aren't we taking that free cash and returning it back to 9 million versus putting the full 12 out of the bar?
Well, I talked a little bit tonight about our stabilization account, about OPEC. What I didn't talk about tonight, but we know it's there, is the snow deficit. Uh, we made that decision to amortize our snow deficit after many meetings last year about that issue, uh, before this body. So we're carrying a $3.7 million snow deficit going forward for the next two years. When the fall numbers, we're sitting on 2.8 right now, uh, we don't know what the year end's going to be, maybe some transfer necessary before the end of the fiscal year. If we finish healthy and the revenues look decent and strong, then we will have additional free cash, which our bond advisors would prefer us build a stabilization to protect the bond rating. If I take out a free cash, uh, we're using up our free cash, it could be used in stabilization, that could affect the bond rating. You lose the rating, then you pay more in interest. Let me reiterate something I said in Finance Year, uh, Finance Committee earlier today. I know that we've, we've gone through some scrutiny and some criticism, the City Hall project in this review, over what we budgeted for. Remind everybody that we've done significant projects in the hundreds of millions with our school projects, that we've come under budget, under time. And, and the, the game changed on Quincy High and the city lost a 90%. But we still move forward with that. We didn't make a major cut in that, in that plan. Uh, we're trying to do things quality, we're trying to do things right, do it once without to revisit it, uh, for a long, long time, whether it's roads, whether it's buildings, that's the album we chose. So it's, it's, it's a policy decision. Whether you put the electrical underground, that's a decision this body is to make. Uh, I think it adds to the significance of the project and when you put in light of what, uh, some of those folks from North Quincy said to me, you look at a hundred-million-dollar high school, a multimillion-dollar track, a multimillion-dollar park after you moved to Old Quincy High School, this is not significant in schemes. I recognize your role and every dollar is important. You're here to protect the taxpayer and have a check on me. That's the child, I get it. I don't need a lecture on it, I said it respectfully, I get it. I'm up there knocking doors as you are, any of those same issues, as you do. You have a job to do, I respect that job. I ask you to support the whole appropriation and I appreciate your time.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming through, but I, I respectfully don't think anyone's giving you a lecture on any of that. We may have disagreements in, in policy, again, I also recognize the fact that you're the chief administrator. With this particular project, I mean, here we are, bottom of the eighth inning, and we could be saving some additional money, that's what I'm thinking.
I can make one further clarification for taxpayers, but just so people understand, the sale of the Central Middle School cannot go to the general fund, cannot be used for offset taxes, it's not going to free cash. It has to be used for other capital projects, just to make that clarification really important.
And it was originally supposed to be used on $12 million.
What we said would be used in progress, it would use the debt of the capital project, that's correct.
It was 12 and one of the nine, so respectfully.
May you go return it.
Right. Oh, respectfully, and I understand, Counselor Harris, you know, it, it's a great public safety improvement. I support that. It's a, you know, upgrade for the kids in the, in the high school, I support that. But when a project becomes 23% cost over, I just can't get behind it. And for me, this particular vote, I know it's emotional, but I just want to explain it, because I think that this vote for me is much more symbolic. We're at a climactic time in our city's history where there's a lot of good stuff going on. We have a downtown that we know we're going to be picking up the conversations in the next couple of weeks and this is a heavy investment financially. So I feel that by supporting, you know, a, a budgetary blowout on this particular project, I mean, I think it sets the wrong example for where we're going financially in these decisions that we're going to make on a $60 million parking lot. But respectfully, we're under the.
I've never heard of a $60 million parking lot, so just be careful of the numbers we go up. With that, I'd like to take a motion. Counselor Finn.
First, if I sounded at all the damn thing before that I was lecturing anyone, that certainly wasn't my intent. But since the mayor raised it, I thought it would be worth contrasting because, what was he, you said in the ninth inning or what was he, in the eighth inning? Okay. I'm in here or there. Never once in Quincy City Hall was there an eighth inning. But there was regular updates related to this project that occurred before this body. And, um, not only that, but even the preliminary documents that were produced for it had a great summary of all the specific knowledge that that is not going to reflect the true cost though. I just think it's a marked distinction between that and this, quite honestly, in terms of how it proceeded. And that, as I said before, and again, I don't really believe in symbolic votes, this has to go forward. I understand conscience and I understand that aspect of it, so it's far more against the law. But it clearly has to move forward. But again, you bow with a, an incredible vision in terms of things that you would like to see accomplished. And I've known for now, as I said, eight plus years moving forward, um, to the extent, particularly now that we're talking about for the purchase of a property, uh, I think it's going to be incredibly important that the level of communication between your office and the administration and this body is going to be absolutely critical to make decisions on that. You're not served well and the city isn't served well when there's an appearance of this just simply stamping everything, right? That it really is better served when those questions, difficulties they may be at times, are answered. But it's also a lot easier for us in terms of moving some of these things forward to have better information than coming forward. And again, at this, and at this point, I'm happy to quit writing, but again, I don't want to have this vote contingent on that for now, but I think particularly as we're moving forward, we're talking about purchasing another property, I think it's something that we clearly understand why the world is in a relationship. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for being here this evening.
So we have a motion on the floor made by Counselor Harris to, uh, move on Council Order 2016-94. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Vaughn, if I follow all.
Counselor Pro.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Kane. Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Penn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lefaris.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Howard.
President Hughes.
Yes.
You'll back up, Madam President. I'm going to close this section. If you mind, I'll put it in. Thank you.
All right, we'll go back on the records of the reopen committee, reports of committees, the other reports of committees. To Counselor Penn.
From Public Works, Madam President, would be relating to the public hearings, I believe that we held last week and Rich National Grid actually sent a representative to, uh, which is Order 2016-99, National Grid Electric install, something, no. Uh, install 71 feet southeast pole required to provide electric service to new building in 22nd and Street, uh, under the record of passage.
All right, uh, very well, is there?
Is there a second? Seconded, motion for.
Motion, excuse me.
All right, seconded by Counselor Devana on the motion. Very well, uh, Madam President, will you go?
Counselor Pro.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Lefaris.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Howard.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Six members.
All right, next item.
The next, uh, 2016-100, um, again, we had a public hearing over this last week. It's from National Grid Electric Temple Street, install five, uh, five-inch concrete encased from 24 Temple Street, 40 feet north across Temple Street to 1306 Hancock Street to feed the new transformer pad for the church, uh, as well as to install handle in public way to serve future lives under the record of passage.
Yes.
All right, recommend, uh, a motion made, seconded by Counselor Devana on the motion, seeing none in Madam President, if I follow all.
Counselor Kane. Counselor Pro.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Penn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lefaris.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Howard. President Hughes.
Yes.
I think further, Counselor Penn, all right?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Penn. Counselor Pro.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chairman. We just finished a two-part meeting on the Finance Committee meeting where we discussed Council Order 2016-094 relative to Teal Field and, um, as I understand this, there will need to be a vote out committee, so if I follow all, please.
All right, uh, so motion to approve made by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Devana. Is there any further discussion, seeing none in Madam President, if I follow all?
Counselor Kane. Counselor Pro.
No.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Penn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lefaris.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Howard. President Hughes.
Yes.
Six members.
All right, thank you. Any further reports of committees? Any further reports of committees? None. Presentation of petition of memorials and remonters. Any? None. Oh, all right, I didn't see. Sorry, Council Crowe.
I did, is where they are, having art, that report the passing of Rudy Maslow. Those folks that knew Rudy, he was a longtime Quincy Point person. Huge family, a lot of ties to the community, just a really, really pleasant guy. And he died peacefully. And I just want, for the record, to make sure that his friends and family serve him in our prayers. And one other one as well, Word Two, was Ellie Alon. Ellie was a longtime Quincy resident, also a resident at 1000 Southern Avenue. She had a very unique, charming way about her. She's very uninvested, nice to be around. She's survived by her daughter, Jen's, Alon, who lived. Just want to hope he said, keep the loot thin in our prayers.
Thank you. Please, Council Crowe. Motion orders and resolutions. Seeing none. Scheduling committee meetings for public hearings. Yes, Council Divana.
If I could, I would like to put the ordinance, before the ordinance, going to the Environmental and Public Health Committee for the amending raising the age from 18 to 21 to the sale of tobacco products. Can we put, do we have to put that in for two weeks of notice in the newspaper? Okay. If we could.
We can actually change it in the U.S.A. So we don't really have, oh, we need some of that. That's a bad one.
If I could with Mr. Council Harris, if we could maybe go with, where we at? Monday, May 16, at 6:00 p.m., right before the 6:30 meeting. 6:30, right, budget, right? Can we do it right before, 30 minutes beforehand? Would that fit it in?
One hour, two minutes.
Right before the budget meeting, I mean, the finance committee with.
I don't think it would get done. I mean, we could do the public hearing and then probably start the conversation. I don't know that it would be backed up in.
Let's see how it goes. If we have to go, I want to have a meeting.
What is it, 16?
Yes.
I want you to put, please. I mean, yeah.
Ways to others. The committee members on that, who else on the committee, is there a seat?
It's ordinance, it's Canadian Hall.
Okay, so we need, let me wait there.
Yes.
Okay. That may be not the best day. How about Wednesday, May 18? Wednesday, May 18?
We have made, what is, what's our P23 ordinance?
Yeah, it's what we're looking at right now.
What did you put on that, Jessica?
I think it's the, you are the adding. So we already have an ordinance meeting set up for that night, and there's already something on the agenda for it.
For the 18th, 23rd?
23rd. The 18th, we haven't looked at.
It's just.
Okay, before budget, that's it.
Um, yeah, Council Publicity has its community meeting that evening at 7:00. Which, 7 o'clock?
Mine was doing 6:00.
6:30.
18.
Oh, 18 is the.
They don't want to open it?
No, no, the 18th, actually, today. This is the next day, this is May 18.
Right, so May 18, 6 before budget.
No, it's not before budget. There's nothing on the 18th.
Nothing on that date.
It would be the only reason.
Oh, goodness. I literally have Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday right now.
Is there?
Let's just do it on Wednesday and see if we get.
Let's just, I'm the ordinance maker, Sharon.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Is there, what about June?
You picked the date.
Yeah, sorry, that's how it goes, right?
Sure.
I guess the chair.
My fault. I was just trying to give to Council Harris at government to do with the environmental, public health section of the.
The ordinance would trump because of the committee hall.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Um, what about June? I mean, I'm thinking about after the budget. It's pretty tight between now and June.
I don't, I just have to open it and not finish it, right? We squeeze at the 6 o'clock or the 6:30 budget. We've all department heads here. And the public hearing and the meeting.
Right, is there a date for it now until the? I mean, June 6 is graduation. Okay, all right. What time is it? Oh, the 18th, huh?
Yeah, 18th, 14.
Okay.
So, June 13 is the, on Monday? Before, before we can, I mean, 8:00.
Sure, that's 6:00.
June 20th, last council meeting. That's bound to get bogged down. We will, why don't we hold the 2/13? I don't know, we have a date? This is crazy.
Did you see the 13, Council?
June.
June, I believe that's Quincy High School graduation.
6 is the graduation, right? 6 and 7?
Yeah, I think it's actually the 13th and the 14th.
Graduation, 13, 14?
This year, they changed it.
Oh, it's not really down there. Okay, so then can we do the 6 then, before the council meeting?
I don't know.
June 6.
I mean, everything else is, every other night is like budget. Monday, Council, Wednesday, the 25th. Memorial Day, we get the budget. Let's do June 6 prior.
June 6. Of our team, Council.
Let's clarify offline on graduation, because the Council Google Calendar says June 6 graduation. I vaguely remember an email about a date change.
I just saw a tweet yesterday, it's 13 and 14.
Okay, yeah, I actually remember seeing an email about a change. I could get my email from that. So let's put, intentionally, in the book, the 6.
May or? When, sorry, sorry, the 6 prior to council meetings.
6:00 p.m. 6:00 p.m.
June, 6:30. We should be able to not forget it in an hour for the public hearing. 6:25, 6:25 public hearing, 6:30, 3:00 p.m. Walker, what date are yours, what year are yours?
Thank you, Council Forests.
Yours. Thank you. Any other for, giggling of?
These are 17 years, right?
They want to do the education meeting for, what was the ordinance? On that, Mr. Forests?
For the education?
Yeah, for the education. Was it charter? Okay. What date is it for you?
Chair.
Talked about this, how about Wednesday, the 18th there? Wednesday, the 18th, 6 o'clock, 6:30, you have to do it? We'll go with 6:30 on Wednesday, the 18th.
Council Collins is on education. He has a conflict, but. Important education.
It's not the 9th, sorry.
Okay, what do you want to do? Will you do it offline? Can you just check it, all right?
Yes. To that.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything further for the, should it be ordered?
Some more.
Yes.
I know.
Council Crowe.
I just, obviously, we saw the presentation this evening for the FY17 budget. I have a breakdown of the first budget hearing. It's a week from tonight. As you'll see by the robust agenda, we're going to not only go into the budget, what we do, we're gonna have in line, Council. So I have the schedules. Thank you, Susan. It's kind of enough, I'll return those up. It's never what I find. When I used to get it, I'd say, oh, this must be easy. Not as easy as it looks, so thank you, Susan, for your help. And I'll pass that. I'll make sure you get a copy because of this. Each department head that we'll go through on particular night. We have three days earmarked, the 9th, 16th, and 17th. So it's obvious time to ask the questions.
Thank you. Motion to read, Chairman? All right, all those favor. All right, thank you very much.